Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the regular planning commission for March 12th, 2013. Thank everybody for being here. I want to thank SCTV for being here to take this meeting and share it with the residents of Simsbury. It's much appreciated. We're going to seat a couple alternates. Actually, to bring us up to full, why don't Rich, Bob, and Gary, one of all of you guys, go ahead?
Yeah, sir.
Full contingency. I'll open the public hearing. Secretary, Howard, I should read this notice, correct?
Correct.
Application 13-01 of Attorney Tom Fahey, agent for Dorset Crossing LLC, owner requesting a re-subdivision of property located at 1507 Hot Meadows Street, MAP H04, block 403, lot 013A, 1515 Hot Meadows Street, MAP 104, block 403, lot 013A, 519 Hot Meadows Street, MAP H04, block 403, lot 13B, to allow for the creation of two lots, zone PAD. Public hearing is open. Would the applicant like to turn around, share something with us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Anthony Georgio, managing director of Keystone Companies. Attorney Fahey is here, and he was going to do the presentation, and he will be available for questions when I thought I was going to get out of town, but I'm here, so we'll chat. You're stuck with me instead of yelling in that bar. As many of you know, I'm just going to use this for reference purposes. Couple of years ago, the Land Use Commission approved the PAD zone for Dorset Crossing. And in the process, you created about six lots as well as an open space area. And that, this was a conceptual plan, lot A, oh, let me stand up. Lot A was the front part. We also gave a final site plan approval for a couple, three of the buildings. The first one, as you know, was out of the occupied. During that presentation, we talked with you about the fact that we expected to do a transaction for the development of approximately 216 market rated apartments here, and we were going to do a transaction with another developer to do 48 special needs housing here. Since that presentation, Mr. Regan has been through, and he's received final site plan approval for his 48 unit special needs housing. And the expectation is, as soon as CHFA and DPCD and DSS figure out how they're going to pay for this, he's going to start. So that's in the strength there. We've also, as some of you noticed, we have come through and we've started working on the extension of Dorset Crossing Road. Equipment is up there. The road is being cut. As several of you alluded to in your pre-meeting, NU has already begun to move forward and start their work. We had been part of, as you may recall, and spent some time with you at the time, that we were going to do a land swap with the town. We were going to give them approximately 1.7 acres, and the town was going to turn over to us approximately 1.6 acre. That unfortunately has not happened as yet, so the map I'm going to show you, which you have, the electronic version of, is what's where we are right now. Last night at your board select meeting, they discussed the fact that the Department of Transportation has been unwilling to release the reverter on this property unless the entire parcel is being used for public purpose. We obviously are kind of caught between a rock and a hard place because we have agreed to make the transfer possible so that we can build the road. So we are prepared to quick play this space to the town so that they can turn around and give you appropriate easements to the Northeast utilities. Unfortunately, this area that I often refer to as the baseball field, for the time being, will have to remain in town, as town property because the DOT will not release it so that we can do a building or parking or anything else on it. We hope to get a non-exclusive easement to be able to park on it as long as it's public property. We shifted, the original building was here, the building is now shifted here, but that, we have to go back to final site plan. Right? I wanted you to, I wanted to talk to you about that because when Mr. Hesskamp gets up and talks to you, you're going to see a plan that has a line that comes straight across. This little eyebrow and the ball field are, will no longer be part of Dorset Crossing. So your map shows that clearly. It's been taken off here, and it's been taken off here, so that this is now town property, and this has become town property. So your subdivision, re-subdivision, is really to re-subdivide this particular piece off of the original B. The developer of the 216 market rated apartments is coming through in the next couple of months with a proposal very similar to this, but for only 166 units as opposed to 216. And part of that is that they did not want to deal with the wetlands crossing, all of which have been approved in advance. So we basically have decided we're not going to sell them this piece of land. And in order to do that, we need to re-subdivide it off to retain ownership ourselves. They will, they, we have a contract with them which will close in July after all of their approvals in place for this piece of the property, property B, for 166 units. And this transaction, which has already been approved by you, will take place also in July. One of the reasons we're moving forward with the road is that both of these developers want to begin working midsummer, early fall on their project. So this evening, Guy Hesskamp will talk to you about the rationale behind the re-subdivision, but I wanted to give you that background and also bring you up to speed on the fact that even though this yellow line shows the real, the town is going to retain ownership at this point in time, and this cleans up the entire thing. We thought we'd do it in one re-subdivision hearing with you. Okay?
Great. If I want to make?
Sure.
For the record, Guy Hesskamp, licensed professional engineer with the Hesskamp and Associates or office on Instagram and Connecticut, and we're here representing Dorset Crossing LLC. And what you have before you here is our re-subdivision plan. I believe you have, this is an update from one that was originally submitted as part of the application. I believe you have electronic version of that. But in a nutshell, originally, there were six lots that were approved, consisting of lots A, B, C, D, E, and F. This being lot A, this being lot B, lot C, D, and B, and lot E here. And what we're proposing is to take lot B, which was this entire parcel here, and divide it into two lots in half. Oh, in half. This was another application for subdivision lot out here. What we're looking at is taking the current lot B, which is delineated by the solid blue line, and dividing it into two parcels. That would be lot B here, which would end up being 10.09 acres, and lot G, which would be 4.54 acres. And as Dr. Georgio said about the area here that was a wetland crossing, the original subdivision map that is shown as a conservation easement, that will be maintained. We're simply taking the northeast boundary of that conservation easement, that's now going to become the boundary for the conservation easement and the probable boundary between lots B and G. So there really are no other dimensional changes other than the separation of these. And as he mentioned, separation is driven by the fact that they have agreement for development of this lot here, which did not include, they didn't want to do the wetlands crossing and development of the other portion of that, so they're simply going to carve that out. And Dorset Crossing will make an ownership of lot G. But the master plan essentially will remain the same as was approved. This is the current master plan here, which included the development for the apartments here. Originally, it included another section of development here, but you can see the new property over here would segregate that from this. Essentially, the development stays the same. It's just a matter of geometric exercise to rearrange the configuration of the lots. So that's what we're looking at from this perspective. So our understanding that the wetlands approval from April of '09 still stands. There are no physical changes or any other changes associated with the development of the land, so that's perfectly reasonable. In a nutshell, that's it. So unless you have any questions, rather myself, for the applicant, then I'll conclude. Thank you.
Any questions?
Are you requesting a lot line change for lot B?
We are.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Tom Fahey for the record. It's not considered a lot line change because we are creating an extra lot. So by statutory definition, it's a re-subdivision as opposed to a lot line change. In a lot line change, basically, you have the same number of lots, you're just changing lots. But because of this division here, we have one additional lot, which requires us to have a re-subdivision of this public hearing.
What if you weren't seeking a re-subdivision? What would happen to lot B as it stands today? Would you be asking for a different configuration of B?
No, because the, when B was originally designed, it was designed and approved not only by your commission, but by the zoning commission and as part of the general plan of development. There were units laid out, and they're doing exactly what was in the original. The units were laid out over both B and G. So what they're doing is simply building all the units that were shown on B, but not crossing the wetlands to build G, which makes a natural division line as Mr. Hesskamp said, to have G stand as a separate lot.
Is your question dealing also with the fact that?
The land swap that hasn't happened.
Right, right. That, that, what we've effectively done is we have changed that little eyebrow. Sometimes easier if you have both maps of the same. Because it's very difficult to see.
Sorry, I've got the other one here.
But the point is that this square, this, there's a rectangle in here that the town currently owns, right? And we were basically going to give them more land, this land, in exchange for them trading this thing. So all of that was moving forward when we did the original subdivision. So the land was designed so that this would be available for the town, and this would be available for us, right? Well, as I alluded to before, we are in a situation right now where DOT will not release the reverter on any of this property unless somebody pays $160,000 for what is essentially about an acre. And as much as I'd like to do that, I'm just not good. And they won't listen to any kind of discussion about the fact that NU is going to have a piece of it, and the town's got a piece of it, there's going to be a rule on it. They won't talk about negotiations whatsoever. So in an attempt not to really challenge the expansion of NU, we've agreed, assuming the commissioner signs off on the notion that this will continue to be under the ownership of the town of Simsbury, and that we will receive from the town of Simsbury a non-exclusive right to build a parking lot there, should that be required. And that's, that's all it is. Now, we don't, we've not asked for that at this point. It was part of the documentation that was presented by your town attorney to the board of selectmen. We're waiting. All of that's been sent to DOT. If DOT signs off on this, which would include the potential of a non-exclusive parking right, then we will quick play the property to the town, and everything goes forward. I haven't thought about what happens if the DOT rejects this, to be honest with you, because that's going to put NU in a very difficult situation because frankly, they need this property in order to expand. What they're doing now is they're, they're putting in the piers for the big towers and everything else. The only violation they've done on our property is they've put a silt fence in, so, you know, the world hasn't come to an end, but we're kind of letting them out the door. Our construction VP and their construction people are talking every day. Everybody knows where the imaginary line is, and they're, they're trying to respect that. But they're also up against the schedule, and at some point, they're going to have to start bringing the stuff in that they need to put on that site. So we're hoping that the commissioner will be reasonable and realistic, and he'll say, okay, fine, you know, go ahead and do it. Town ends up with an extra 1.7 acres, and we end up with an opportunity to park in the future. But it will be public parking, not necessarily exclusive parking. So as it is now, somebody decides to park in our parking lot and go with somebody else in a carpool, I mean, that's what they do. So there's no way we're going to police that. At this point, that is the only little revision. This thing has been squared off as opposed to that little round thing. And the, the line is very clearly here. This is a new line which basically takes it out of our name.
But if I could just add?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just clarify about, we never took title to this piece, okay? And after the town originally approved the initial land exchange agreement, that triggered us. We put a note on the plan that we were going to be acquiring that piece by virtue of the land swap. We then searched the title, and when we searched the title, that's when we discovered that the DOT sold this to the town of Simsbury for $8,000 back some 20, 30 years ago. They reserved a reverter, which essentially means that if any part of it ceased to be used for public purpose, there would be an automatic transfer of the entire parcel back to the DOT. And it would happen automatically, okay, just by virtue of the non-public use. So that obviously, we obviously contacted the town attorney, and they contacted the, and met with the DOT a number of times. And it took, and after a year, they come up with this idea that, well, this property, they, they took evaluation of the entire parcel, not just this little piece here, and said, well, you got to pay $160,000 to remove this reverter. And we think, we actually have, obviously, we don't think that's a property that's lawful, but we also don't have another year to go through the process of proving that when we have contracts with the shareholders and whatnot, and they're ready to go on their expansion of the power plant or their transportation. So they, according to town attorney and for selectmen, when they met with the DOT last night, said, look, as long as it remains as a public parking lot, okay, which means that anybody can use it, and then they would recommend that the reverter be released. And that's where we are now. We're not going to actually transfer title to the town until we have a letter from DOT that says, okay, the reverter is, we're okay with this plan. We think it is, and we think it should be timely. The town attorney is forwarding all the documentation that was approved last night to the DOT this week, so hopefully that'll be successful.
I think in answer to your question, if anything was moved around here, that would just be a lot of light adjustment. It would not be a subdivision. Because that's just literally moving the line to include the other parts.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize. I thought you were referring to these lots. No, that's all this. In fact, no, we had considerable discussion during the original subdivision application surrounding the land swap. And we reserved the right to have you come before us again if there were going to be changes to the agreed upon subdivision. So I think that's what you're doing here.
Yeah. That's exactly. We originally, well. The original purpose of our application here was to create lot G. But because we know where this land swap that's not going to take place is heading, we sent you the electronic version and thought, we might as well clean it up now. And because it's unlikely, in my humble opinion, that DOT is going to suddenly change their mind and say, all right, why don't you guys go ahead and sell that piece or trade that piece? So we're never going to be able to buy it. We're never going to be able to get title to it, so it should not be part of Dorset Crossing. And so this is, and I'd have to clean that up and make it a little bit more.
So to your point, it does both things. It cleans up the lot line and it makes it a lot.
And you're, you're deeding 1.07 acres to the town. That was that little bit, kind of no man's land to the west.
Yeah, it's kind of a funny shape. It's easier to look at on this one.
Yeah, I have it from the original discussions.
It's basically right here.
It's this one right here.
This, this, this.
Yeah. Right. And you were hoping that you could exchange that for that part.
Yeah, exactly. We were given 1.07. Yep, we're getting 1.06. And at the time, as you can see from underneath here, there was a building there that was all approved. But obviously, we can still build a building, but we have to move it down. And this is at conceptual stage, anyway. These are the only two that got final approval. So if and when that ever happens and its related parking, we'll have to come back to you and show you that we have the non-exclusive easement and that the building will fit there and blah, 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 blah. But right now, it seemed appropriate to clean this up and to basically put this back into public side. It's just impossible to do it any other way. Everything on here, with the exception of this 1.06, is going to remain in public use. The road, the right away from the road, the utility easements, and, you know, we were going to end up with some additional parking. Well, we can't take title, so that's not going to happen. All right? Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious, except for the $160,000, you don't have to pay. Has DOT somewhat severely, modestly affected the economics of the deal for you? Is this, I'm just curious if?
Well, sure it has, because let's assume I have a need for that little 6,000 square foot building and its related parking. I have to build a parking lot, maintain it, put all the appropriate drainage and everything else in, on town property. I have to plow the stone and everything else, but it's, it's never going to be mine. It's never going to be part of the title. And frankly, we've now got our financing people who have the financing on this going through their legal beagles, trying to figure out how they're going to change all the documents to reflect that that 1.06 acres is not part of what they approved in the, when they did the financing. I don't think that's going to have an economic consequence, but I do think that the reality is that we're going to essentially make an investment in the future. Yes, we'll have a building. We'll make an investment in the future on a piece of property that we do not own.
I think Tony's being a little modest. There's two other things, too. It's going to limit the type of tenant he could get because he can't represent that he has all of that land for parking lot, and he has a non-exclusive easement. And so that's going to limit the type of tenants that would be interested in that parcel. And number two, all of the expenses for all of the mapping and the changes that have been required for the land exchange and my CLMP for the various different things that we've had to do while this has been going on is on Tony's net. So with that.
Does the regional have to pay taxes on the 1. something acre?
Would that sound great?
Yeah. That's, that's a bright line. That's a bright signal. I knew for a good reason. I just, you know, I, well, yeah, you gave away 1.07. You're not going to pay on the 1.06.
She's a good dad.
I would have, if they had agreed to a proportionate share, I would have paid a proportionate share to get that piece, but I'm not going to. First and foremost, this is where you've got to get stuck in your own pitar. That land was useless until we got a zone PAD. Now suddenly, it's worth $160,000 for quote unquote four acres. Come on. Every appraisal we did before it was moved, the entire back piece wasn't worth $160,000. I mean, it just. But you know what? Life goes on. It's, what we need from you this evening is approval of creating lot G and of the acceptance of the redefined lot lines that we're doing because we have no choice.
Any other questions?
How's this going to affect the proposed road that you were so graciously going to build for us?
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing we're going to do. It's not going to affect it at all.
No, because I, you know, on this drawing, we showed that, you know, the roundabout's gone, and this shape is different, of course.
Yeah, no, what basically you're seeing here, go back to this, the roundabout, I'm sorry. The round, this little bump is the top of the roundabout.
Right.
So we're still doing this. We're, we're, right now, we have Hal Pierce out there under contract. He's beginning to cut the road up to this point. We're getting ready. We've signed up an open agreement with WPCA. We've got our, we're moving to put the bonding in place of the town of Simsbury. We're working with some other division of DOT to get a bond for the light that we think will be warranted once we get the apartments done. So we're proceeding as though nothing had happened. What's happened basically is we don't have this, and we don't have that.
It's just the shape changed, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't, I can't explain the geometry of the shape.
I understand.
But we're still doing it.
Great. Okay.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions?
Oh, and it's going to be a toll road.
Gotcha.
Easy path.
Easy path.
State will be happy to hear that.
First one, first one to the state.
Only kidding. Anybody else like to, from the public, like to say anything?
Do we have any requirements, slope requirements, or anything like that to consider?
I don't believe we have any slope or any flat requirements that we have to come through. Howard did check and verify that there is no wetlands. Does that affect?
Parcel being created, usually there's wetlands on the parcel, even if you're not building on it, it has to be referred to wetlands. If you look closely at the line there, the wetlands line is about 10 feet from the parcel, but it does not go on the parcel, so there is no wetlands approval required for this re-subdivision. And as the applicant pointed out before, the permit is still in place for the balance of work on parcel parcel.
Okay. Do we should have any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move. It's approved. Approved.
Bob seconds it. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of a motion to approve the subdivision as presented?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed, tensioned? Guys have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Question for you, Howard. It's the next item on our agenda. Is that a public hearing?
Uh, no.
It's just an adaptation, but I agree with this also.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item on our agenda.
Do we want to close the public hearing, Mr. Yen?
Actually, I probably should. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing that we just voted on?
So.
Second. Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Good catch. Discussion of possible action, application number 13-02 of Vera, approved? Thank you. Owner requesting an extension of re-subdivision approval from March 2008, a property located at 14 Weatherly Road, MAP F05, block 301, lot 045, and 16 Weatherly Road, MAP F05, block 301, lot 045, zone R4. As I understand this, Howard, this is merely to approve a continued.
Extension.
Extension.
Existing subdivision. Subdivision is coming up on five years, as much or whatever, for the approval. Now, of course, the legislature did change the law a couple of years ago. Any subdivision approved between 2006 and 2009 was automatically good for six years. But Ms. Brune has a interested party who is thinking of purchasing the property, and purchasing it when you have less than a year left in which to completely build it up without the thing expiring is just a little arduous. And so you'd rather get the extension now so that a potential buyer will have time to get his financing order, get contractors lined up, and start developing before the actual subdivision expires.
Okay. Do we have about a year left?
We have approximately a year left conditionally.
Okay.
But they could be renewed at that point.
Okay. Ma'am, would you like to share anything with us? Any questions or? No? Okay. One, give you an opportunity. Does everybody understand what's going on here?
This is the property at the end of the road that if you kept going straight, you'd go to Newbury, right?
Yeah.
As I mentioned, the previous application, any lot that contains wetlands, obviously has to have a wetlands approval. The wetlands permit similarly runs for six years on this. Wetlands commission brought this up at their last meeting and approved a five-year extension on their permit as well. So that's already in place before this comes to you today.
So what's the status of the application, of the subdivision now? Is it conditionally approved? Is it?
No, it was approved. It was completely approved. Approvals run for, well, at this point, for six years. If you don't act on it within six years, it goes away. And so they're looking to have the subdivision approval extended so that the new purchaser of the property will have some time in which to actually get this thing created before it expires.
I do see in our subdivision regulations the five-year.
Right.
Limit with, the time can be altered by the general statutes, as I think you've indicated, for that time period, it's six years.
Correct.
But I do not see any provision for extending an approval.
These are brand new rigs, so I'm not sure where it's put in there, but they are allowed in the statute, which of course the rigs reflect. But the statute does allow wetland permits, the zoning permits for site plans and for subdivision permits, extension of at least one, if not multiple.
Are you aware of any approvals that have been extended?
Are you aware of any approvals that have been extended?
I think residential properties, 25, I'm not sure over the last couple of years if we've had one. We've had a couple that have come close, but then someone purchased them. I mean, with any luck, the applicant, as the party that's interested in, you know, with any luck, they'll, they'll actually purchase it, be able to get the financing through and all that. It's just, makes them a little nervous to be buying something when they know they're up against the finite timeframe here.
Well, if I understand what the two of you are saying is, our subdivision regulations say that we give a five-year timeline to get to it or subject to state regulations. State regulations now allow six years plus an extension, so...
Ironically, they're back allowing five years again, but permits that were, you know, the legislature looks at this every couple of years just to keep people at bay. But they did say that any permit that was granted between 2006 and 2009 is automatically good for six years. Permits issued today are only good for five. So they've sort of reverted back to the original, for years and years and years, it was five. Home Builders Association lobbied with the legislature a number of years ago because it slowed down the housing market. The builders were complaining that they were going to have to go through all their approvals all over again, it was going to jack up the cost of housing, so the legislature decided they would extend permits by one year for that period of time to try to compensate for that.
Yeah, I'm reading the section again, for everybody, section 12, point B, point five, time limit for final approval. It says, "Unless the applicant shall comply with all of the requirements of this subsection B, including the subsections, within five years from the date of conditional approval, conditional approval with modifications or approval by default, exclusive of any time during the commission's decisions being appealed, such subdivision conditional approval shall lapse." So it's not referring specifically to an approval.
Let me ask a question. Would this be grandfathered under the old subdivision rec because of the approval of the old subdivision?
This would automatically be good for a year from roughly this month. 2008, we're coming up on a five-year period right now, but since this was approved in 2008, between 2006 and 2009, by the state legislature, it's automatically valid for another year. But the applicant has the opportunity or the right to extend that at any point in time. But the extensions are fine, because they're not extended for six.
Bob, this section was the same as the...
As the other.
The old, so it's not one that we modified.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, if I'm hearing what you're saying, right, Howard, we can extend it for a year because of the change in the state regulations, which...
Permits now are for five-year blocks.
Right. So... But within the state regulations, they allow you to give another year, or am I misunderstanding?
The state regulation allowed the permit when it was issued to Ms. Bruin initially to run for six years because it was, you know, within that time period. But extensions for a permit issued today would only run for five years sometimes. So if you extend the permit, you would have no option to go for five years, you couldn't extend it to six.
Okay, so her, her permit is good for six years.
Right.
So that would go to March 25th...
2014.
2014. Okay.
You're seeking an extension for five years from that point.
Hopefully, the housing market will approve that somebody will construct a house at the end of the street and stuff, but in the meantime, I just figured that...
This is something we should run by the town attorney.
I've gone through a lot of effort to get that approval and I just didn't want it to revert back to...
Table, town attorney. I think you've taken a proactive step in trying to seek our...
Right.
...approval for an extension well, well before the deadline, and I appreciate that.
I agree.
I, I think, I think we should probably consult the town attorney, the town attorney and the Connecticut general statutes regarding extensions of approvals. Kind of continue to our, to our next meeting.
So the consensus is agreed?
Additional restrictions needed.
Okay. Bob, you okay with that?
Please don't take this as any indication of, you know, approval or disapproval.
We're for you. We don't want it...
If it costs you money...
It's clear.
Okay, so why don't I ask for a motion to table this?
So moved.
Gary, second?
Second.
Bill? We'll table this till we get clarification from town attorney as to what our legal qualifications are to extend this.
Right.
Even though we'd like to approve it, we've got to make sure we do a legal...
No. Because I checked the statute today and those allow for five extensions.
Howard, the statute number, pardon? The statute number that, where that's not that.
I don't have to remember.
That's okay. No, 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 probably that's a...
You didn't memorize it?
I just thought if you had that, right.
1467-8... And it's...
That's okay, Howard.
It's frustrating because I, I had a whole pile of stuff, I was going to bring the whole statute with me tonight, I need that. Run back to the office and get it.
No, 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 no. You know, what we can do is, if we can have that for our next meeting, we'll leave this as a possible action item. And I, I think our intention is...
Are you online?
No.
Okay. To, to try to get this through and, but we want to make sure that we don't open a can of worms that suddenly we've created a exception to our rules.
I think our town guidelines should also reflect that once we clarify it. Maybe we need to add a section or paragraph to it.
Yeah, amend it. That's a good point. Yeah, not sure I'm real comfortable trusting to the STIG to give us waivers. That maybe just me. So we have a motion on the table to table this, we have a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? We'll get to this right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's see. Communications, any other communications or administrative business, Howard?
Uh, no.
I appreciate that, there is, there's a basketball game going on. Approval of the minutes. Since our secretary, I'll see if I can remember how this goes. Any suggested changes on page one? Earring none, page two. Earring none, page three. Still hearing silence, page four. And on to page five. No changes, directions. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 26th?
So moved.
Bill? Second? Bob seconds it. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, that's passed.
I move to adjourn.
Second, I move.
Like to discuss.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, guys.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.